So I am just checking in, did everyone read chapter two from that book? I think previously we had already read the introduction and chapter one in a different session. So we're gonna kind of keep the conversation focused on the first, those three sections. And so I guess first generally reactions or anything stick out from what anyone read there?
I thought that was, it was a pretty powerful chapter. A lot of what I read spoke directly to me and I identified a lot of ways where I, in some cases, I forget all the specific terms that were used, or I guess the dueling consciousness, you know, pretty much in everyday life, I thought it was very relevant, I think, to certainly my experience. And I think will be really helpful to understand that dual consciousness as we continue on with the work.
That was that WDD Boyce, the dual consciousness, that's something that really stuck with me because it's something that I do every, every day, I have to deal with every day. And finding that medium and where I fit in. And I agree with Graciela, it brought me right to where I need to be. And I have an understanding of it, but you know, sometimes it's, it can be taxing to do the, to be both, to try to deal with both, but you still persevere on and go on and work it out.
He didn't get into a lot of details in this chapter, but he kind of alluded to the whole thing about how much of racism is built into policy in, in terms of how government is structured, how schools are structured, how opportunities are structured, how, and how much, you know, I was, I was in my young adulthood in the seventies and eighties and not totally aware of what kinds of roadblocks were in the way for people. And, and it's really just, it's amazing, you know, I developed some awareness then, but obviously Dawn, you were living it. And, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing, the, the amount of policy that was done in this country around education, around healthcare, around where you can own property, and how you get bank loans. And, you know, you, the list goes on, and that's not all articulated here, but he's alluding to that. In that sometimes the message he was getting as a, as a child growing up was, well, you just need to get your education and work harder and everything will just work out. And that's not always the case. And so I think that we have to remind ourselves of that, that, that we continually have to be looking at what, because we're policymakers in this role, and we have to continually look at what are we doing? Is, is there anything that we do in our policy work that creates roadblocks for people? There perpetuates racism or perpetuates unequal opportunity. And so it's a continual, it's like Dawn, you said, it's a continual battle. And, and right now, we're facing in the country, we're facing a real backlash on some of the gains that have been made. And when you think about voting rights and some of those things, we're, we're seeing an intentional effort to undermine the gains that we've just made. And so I think we have to pay attention to all of that in the big picture.
I am enjoying reading this book, quite honestly, much more than the Singleton book. I think it's, I think it's because I see it as being more personal than the Singleton book, which for me came across as a coursework textbook. And it's, it was a more challenging read for me. The more I get into Kendi's book, I guess the angrier I become. Because I see all of the, I see all of the, all of the inequities and challenges that Norm talked about that are built into the systems that we have. And how, how blatantly unfair a lot of those are, a lot of those systems are. And it, it brings within me a deeper appreciation of the challenges that people of color have in this country. And how when, as I was growing up, I took all of that, I took, I took all of that for granted. And so it makes me a little bit angry that I took it for granted and I wasn't challenged in this way when I was coming up, so.
Yeah. It's interesting what you said about the, you know, how this read is different from the other read. What, any others, what kind of comparisons would you make between these two reads so far?
Well, I think in one, on one realm, it's, it's, it hits on some of the same concepts, but it's really very clearly one man's story. And, and, and it kind of, it, it keeps coming back to his experience and his point of view, but it reinforces kind of some of the philosophical and, and policy points that were part of the other book. But it's more personal, even though there were vignettes of personal things in the other book, this one is really just telling the story and pretty directly. And also what, what is interesting to me, it's, his, his parents are my generation. And it's interesting to see the struggles that they had. And they clearly shared a lot of values that I do, like education is, I strongly value education. I value knowledge, I value experience. And they, as parents, they were, that was really a strong value for them. And yet the way they had to go about things and the way experienced things was different than how it was for me as, as a white male during that time.
I'm wondering, I want to just stay for a little more on looking at these two books. When you are contrasting these two books, let me see if I can get this to show up. Okay, so here we have kind of a left to right, these six conditions of courageous conversation. And so I'm wondering which of the, of these six conditions do you see Kendi modeling or reflecting in the way that he writes this text?
For me, although I do see all, well, pretty near all of these conditions reflected in, in what he's sharing with us. I think probably it, it more speaks to the third condition for me. Especially this chapter, because it talks about, you know, assimilation and segregation and anti-racism. And I see those three areas as really being the, the illustration sort of of what he's talking about and reflective into the third condition.
Not sure that I can select one condition specifically. I think I see all six conditions in this text. It is, initially I was leaning more towards condition one and two, but I think it's across the board, pretty representative of all six.
I, I was looking at two and six, and you really look at it all, it's all six. Mainly dealing with six mostly examine the presence and race or whiteness. Presence and role of whiteness, it impacts, its impact on the conversation in the proper being addressed. I think we can always have to address that even as a black man. And just as WDD Boyce said, you know, American and Negro, you know, I've been colored, I've been Negro, I've been Afro-American, now I'm African-American, now I'm black. It's, it's like, wow, and it's, it's all a label, right? And, but when you look at the Irish and Scandinavians, how they just fit in because of their skin color and they adapt it, but we try to adapt constantly. And the policies change, the rules change, like Norm said, here now we in 2021 suppressing the right to vote. And that's something that, that's not cool, right? And we have to be aware of the policies that we make to put up roadblocks for education, to educate young people and minorities and be equitable, equitable about it in every area. And that's, that's going to always be up in the forefront.
I think my point in asking this particular question is because I agree with you, especially Graciela, all six of these, well, except for maybe condition four, because he's not really facilitating a dialogue with other people. But condition one, he is focusing on his own personal, local and immediate, his story, where he was at in different amount of time, different places, how they are influencing him today. He is consistently isolating race, although as we go through the chapters, he talks about race in the context of other things as well. He still calls out and isolates how race is at play in the examples that he gives and in the narratives that he's storing. He is talking about social construction throughout the text, especially like you were saying in this chapter, where he is saying, talking about how other groups look at various groups and this idea of like assimilating and assessing values, you know, different cultures or different groups norms. And then we go to condition five, using a working definition of race, really clearly isolating race, but naming it in ways that differentiate it from ethnicity and nationality and, and examining the presence and role of whiteness. And so this is definitely on many levels, an easier read than the other one because of the narrative flow. But my purpose in doing one before the other is to hopefully have us be able to recognize what the author is doing in ways that we would not have been able to recognize what the author is doing before. And as we engage in this conversation, to also be able to reflect these six conditions in the way that we talk. And all of you are saying, well, I think of it this way, or I, this is how it was for me, and are doing a pretty good job of reflecting at least that first condition in the way that you're talking about this. And I'm hearing some of you really reflecting condition six in the way that you're, you're having this discussion. And so my hope is that we can continue to come back to these six things and make sure that they are principles about the way that we engage in the conversation. But that's why I think it was, that's the value I see in starting with the harder, more academic read. But yeah, I think definitely this is a lot more fun to read this one than the other one was because there is a little bit of a flow to it. One of the, so here are some questions that I borrowed from another place. Racist perceptions of black people spawned from racist policy and ideas, not black behavior. That's one of the messages of this chapter. Can you name some perceptions of black people which stem from? Actually, I want to, before that, this idea of policy and that racism is being perpetuated through policy is a major theme of the entire book. What do you think he means by that word, policy? And is it the same thing that we mean when we use that word?
I don't think it's the same. I think he frames policy more in the structure of systems and less in the actual development of written policy, which talks about the what of a system, which is, for me, it's different.
Anyone else? How do you think he's, he's using this word? Is his definition similar or is it the same as what a school board means when they say policy? And if not, how might it be different?
I kind of had the, I had the opposite reaction of Marsha. I, I thought it was kind of the, he's talking about systems and how, how systems are structured. And that that's what he means when he's talking about policy. And even that's what, that's what we do. We structure, as policymakers, we structure the system. We provide the what and we oversee the how, but we don't, we, in our particular policy system, we don't make all the down to the detail decisions, but we set the overriding values and principles. And I'm, in that sense, I think he is talking about the, the values in culture or the values in government or our policy. And maybe part of it is just, the policy is the, the structure is viewed by the dominant culture too, who tends to have more power in setting the policies. But I, when I read it, I just, I didn't, I didn't create a different meaning in my mind for the word policy. It read the same to me.
For me, it read the same as implementing policies. And when you talk about system, there's systematic racism within the policies that are written. And we have to be cautious and intentional, not following the old norm and changing the system, right? And writing policies that will fit all students and, and all people. And it's, it's like what Norm said, it's those who were in power at that time.
Yeah. One example from that time that they talked about, that he talked about was the Reagan e-policy of, we need to do something about the welfare queen. You know, that there's this, the mass, there's this mass abuse of the welfare system. And using one example of one person in Chicago that had managed to scam the whole system too, for a lot of money. But, but he creating the myth that that's everybody that's, needs to rely on welfare or unemployment or whatever. They're just all scamming the system. And he made it work. He made people believe that. There are people still believe that. And so that's, that's an example of how policy was set by, by the creation of a myth and perpetuation of a false, a false pretense.
Graciela, what's your answer?
As I read the chapter, I identified policy as the same thing as, as what we do, certainly on a smaller scale, but systematic, you know, decision being made that impacts large groups of people. And I don't think we always take the time to look at what those impacts were and, and, you know, didn't look at the adverse impacts that that could happen. And so as I read it, I identified it as the same thing as, as what we do.
So have you all ever heard this term, hidden curriculum? Like who's familiar with that term? I'll put it in the chat too. And I actually gravitate towards what Martha said. Because I think what boards do is a lot of the written stuff. And it says, here's the rule. And a lot of times the policies and the laws are written to try to be anti-racist, but the actual practice of what happens on a day-to-day basis is different than what has actually been written down. And I think the example that Norm gave is a good one, where even if you shift away from some of the policies that produce this war on drugs and all of that sort of, or about welfare, when even after you shift the, the policies, the, the formal language, the attitudes and the beliefs and the norms and those things that are being carried out are still happening the way that they were happening before and going unchallenged. And so I would, I would suspect that Kendi has a more encompassing view of what policy is than just what we formally write down and adopt. I think policy includes not just what is adopted in terms of the language, but actually what is our practice and our systems and how do they actually function in contradiction sometimes to what may actually be written down or expressed in the documents. I haven't attended a lecture where he's talking about this, but it's my sense from reading the book that it's more than just what we produce, but does it actually change what's happening? And the change sometimes in the written policy doesn't, there's a hidden policy, a hidden routine of how we do business that I think still may perpetuate some of these things. So as we're reading, let's keep an open lens to that and try to keep the, keep our, keep an awareness of the fact that sometimes what we say we want to be done and what is actually taking place are two different things. And the real policy is what is actually taking place. Because sometimes you say, this should not happen here, but what is actually happening here? And that's what's producing the results that we're seeing. Does anyone have a thought or question about that? So going back to the text, did you have any quotes from the text that particularly stuck out as worthwhile to share?
For me, his discussion on the difference, differences between assimilation and segregationist and anti-racist ideas and language were pretty impactful. The, the one, the one paragraph that for me, that probably says, talks the most about that is the last paragraph on page 31. It's actually a very long paragraph. It starts in the middle of the page. But he talks about, sort of toward the middle of that paragraph, assimilationists believe that people of color can in fact be developed, become full, fully human, just like white people. Assimilationist ideas reduce people of color to the level of children needing instruction on how to, how to act. Segregationist ideas cast people of color as animals, to use Trump's description for Latin, this is small print for me, Latinx immigrants, unteachable after a point. The history of the racialized world is a three-way fight between assimilationist, segregationist, and anti-racist. For me, that was, that was probably one of the most powerful passages in this particular chapter. Primarily because when I read it, it made me angry that we have to talk, that, that these ideas exist. And they shouldn't, but they do. And I guess the purpose, it's the purpose of why we're, why we're here, to try to address those concepts and eliminate them, at least the first two, as much as possible.
Thank you. And do you find that with those three that he sets up, that, well, I'll say for me, I know that there are times that I have gravitated into those different buckets. Like I've been the assimilationist sometimes, I've been the segregationist sometimes, and I've been the anti-racist sometimes. And that's the thing that bugs me the most, or that was the most difficult reading it, is, you know, as a, as a leader of color in school systems, there are times when I can go back and see myself really reflecting one of those pushing for, for assimilation in particular, in the way that I approach this work. And it's like, that idea of dueling consciousness is like, yeah, this lives in us. We are in a duel between these points of view that we have internalized over, over a long time.
I think it's real easy to fall into that, especially for white people. Because that's, that's the messages we received as we were growing up, you know, people of my age. That's, it was, you know, these people need to assimilate, they just need to assimilate. Because what the white culture does is the best process. And I'm not, I, I don't believe that to be true anymore. I did at one point, but I don't anymore. And it's, I, I think those are real easy traps to fall into, is to move into one of those, one, especially those first two blocks and, and not move out. I think if you move into it and recognize that you're there and then jump out, then I think you're making progress. But you have to be able to recognize that.
I think, I think the quote that stands out for me that relates exactly to that concept, it's both with the, the inner struggle of trying to assimilate or the demand of the white culture to ask other people to assimilate. And the quote says, "Assimilationist ideas reduce people of color to the level of children needing instruction on how to act." And I think that, that kind of, it's, it's a, it's a downward looking kind of, if they, if these people just knew how to act, they would just be okay, things would be okay. And I think how many times have, have we seen that kind of behavior? Or even that rationale in the classroom? You know, from, we hear that sometimes from ourselves, maybe, we hear it sometimes from teachers. It's like, those kids just don't know how to act right. And, and I think it's the refusal to look at, maybe there's more than one way to act to get needs met or to communicate, or people act to get needs met. And so the actions are an attempt to meet the needs. And rather than focusing on the action, focus on what's this kid need? What does this parent need? What does this teacher need in order to, to function better and create an anti-racist society?
Yeah, well, Marcus, I, I, I agree with you that, that sense of, you know, it was a very uncomfortable chapter, to be honest, because I recognize that I move in and out of those different, the assimilationist, the anti-racist, or negationist. You, you move in and out and you can reflect back and identify when you've moved in and out of each of those. And so the whole chapter was just really uncomfortable because it's like, oh wow, I think I do this. And, you know, just the other day, I said something that, you know, probably is under the And, you know, just the other day I said something that, you know, probably is under the assimilationist, you know, and and I find myself swinging to the extreme both ways. You know, to this day, I think I swing back and forth. And so it's just, it's yeah, really interesting. So the quote that spoke to me was one of the quotes from Du, was it, is it Dubois, Du Bois? Let's see, the middle, top of page twenty nine, second paragraph. One ever feels his tuness, an American, a Negro. And you can substitute Negro with, you know, Mexican, Asian, whatever other, right? They shouldn't use the word other. I just did that. Two souls, two thoughts, two unreconciled strivings, two warring ideals and one body, dark body, whose dogged strength alone keeps it from being torn asunder. You know, that it's such a strong quote. It, it's very true. Everyone I know who's, who's bi-cultural or a person of color is, has that exact, those exact thoughts and, and feelings. And, you know, there, there's even memes around. I think there was a, a, a video of someone getting, it was a person of color getting off work, you know, from corporate America and they get in their car and they kind of take a deep breath and take the tie off and puts the hair down and then, you know, gets some music on. And, and it's just like her whole persona changes. She doesn't have to have her corporate America face on. She can just be herself now. You know, and that's, you know, just a daily thing to have to go through. So that was really interesting.
Graciela, we must be on the same wavelength because that was the one that struck me the most. And when you talk about this, you know, the three, I've had to maneuver through all three. And if you stay in one, you get bogged down. So you have to be versatile. And that comes from growing up in the sixties and knowing where and what to do. Like Norm was talking about, there's, you know, in, in New Orleans, there was this middle class part of town called Puntertrain Park where the affluent blacks lived. And, and then there was other areas and you had to know how to maneuver through each section. And it's, I, I, I like that dual piece that Du Bois is talking about because I had to live it. Right? And, and you have, and it, and now I, I used to be a militant. Right? And, and then, then it changed, right, over time. But, you know, you have to know how to simulate to get your point across in different parts and, and different times. And this is what I do for, 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 been doing for a long time is at, at a young age, Norm, you know, I can relate to this guy's parents. You know, how to maneuver because I watched my parents, my grandparents maneuver through this. And I've learned how to do it. And, you know, I, I, I agree with some of what Martha said about that, that part where it talks about, you know, they're, they're, they're animals, you know, we're not animals. We are, we are human beings, but that's, that was that piece to keep us down, to keep us at each other and, and not to achieve. I like this book. I like this chapter. It brought me back to my childhood and to see the growth that I have now from then. Right? And knowing that I'm on the right track and doing what, what I need to do.
Because the other comment I have is that it, it, this quote, and the, one of the exercises we did in a previous chapter in the Singleton book where we answered the survey questions, you know, or because of my race, I, you know, whatever. That, you know, there, there's this whole other layer of, of stress. I think that, that there are other, other layer of stuff that people of, of color carry. And it's just an everyday, everything. And, and this, this kind of really brought that to the forefront for me. I was having a conversation with a coworker who bought a house and when he was looking at the house, the neighbors came out kind of aggressive, asking, you know, what, what he's doing there and you know, whatever. And, and he's just looking, looking to buy the house. And he's, he's a person of color. And, and so you, 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 you wonder, is this guy being racist or is he just trying to be, is he trying to protect his house? But, but there's always that question, is it because of my race? And in every interaction, you always ask that question. And it sucks to have to ask that, to have to wonder that all the time with all of your interactions. And then the, the, the other thing that I'm thinking about is, is when it comes to the, the culture that we're part of, you also have to be, you know, in my side, I have to be Mexican enough or like the Mexican people, right? And so I, I always think back to the movie Selena and the quote that her father has, and I, I brought it up because I wanted to read it in case you're not familiar with it. So he says, being Mexican-American is tough. We got to be twice as perfect as anybody else. I mean, we got to know about John Wayne and Federico Infante. We got to know about Frank Sinatra and Agustin Lada. We got to know about Oprah and Christina. Japanese Americans, Italian Americans, German Americans, our homeland is on the other side of the ocean. Ours is right here. We got to be more Mexican than the Mexicans and more American than the Americans, both at the same time. It's exhausting. So I always thought that was just really interesting. And that spoke to me the first time I saw it. And that is similar, ring similar to what I'm writing here. Good stuff.
Any thoughts from cabinet folks?
I'll simply add, thank you for that, Director Villanueva. That was very powerful. And when you talk about finding yourselves in different categories, I think Marcus, you and, and maybe Martha both mentioned that. And I typed it in. I just think that's where real growth happens is when you're reflecting on how you see yourself entering and exiting those areas. And it doesn't happen without these type of conversations and studies, because we don't naturally, we're just living at that point. But when we sit back and we reflect in a way that we're, we're doing with Kendi's book and finding ourselves in those different areas as a, as a, you know, and you mentioned the categories, then I think that's where we really make progress.
What are some ways that you think our system asks kids to assimilate?
One that's always bothered me, one that's always bothered me is that we change kids' names. So if they're easier to pronounce, I, I became Gracie. My, you know, uncle to this day hates being called Johnny, but people still call him Johnny because it was the thing to go to, to say rather than Juan. That, that's one way that's always bothered me.
Learn to speak English. English is the only language that you need to have. And I think that's the message that too many of our Spanish speakers receive, both parents and students.
You're not like the rest of them.
And I'll put the question maybe another way. What's, what's an example of a policy that might seem race neutral on the surface? But when you unpack the impact of it, it, it is, it's either assimilationist or racist in some other way.
The attendance policy.
How so? What would you say about that?
I don't know that our attendance policy takes into account celebrations, holidays, festivals from other cultures other than the white culture. And it's not, it's not necessarily a criticism, but I think it's an opportunity to affect some change. It also doesn't take into consideration challenges or cultural norms that, yeah, cultural norms that other cultures have. And I think in particular, the Native American culture and, and what they do when, when there's a death in the family. We don't take that into consideration in, in our attendance policy. And I think that's another opportunity for us.
That's a, and that's a specific policy that you named, but then you also named a lot of routines that are connected to it that, that are what I'm, why I'm saying I think he has this more expansive idea. Because you're talking about the calendar, it may not be a policy, but the calendar, when it works these ways, in Seattle, we had a very high East African population. We had a high population of students who were observing Ramadan and fasting. And there was actually an administrator that put out a memo to families, asking them not to fast because the test-taking period was aligned to Ramadan. There wasn't a decision to reconsider when we were administering the test. It was maybe you should give up on fasting during this time so that your student can perform better on this assessment that, you know, many people believe is asking them to assimilate into whiteness. Like if you, it's an example, right? There's not a policy that says that that kind of memo should go out. And it's not necessarily a policy that says when the test has to be administered. But all of those are things that are ways that ask, we're asking kids to assimilate.
This English language test that really is a test of only understanding and comprehending English as opposed to a test of core knowledge.
Yeah. And then so many other tests that require the English to, I saw a quote that said, did they come out with new math because we didn't need the English language to get the old math? And I was like, that was a powerful question that was posed there. Like all of a sudden math has to change. And now it's, it's based on how you can use the English language to communicate these math ideas as opposed to whatever it used to be. So it's, it's really interesting. But I appreciate you guys for your engagement today. We're actually gonna be done early. We're supposed to be done at four twenty. It's four seventeen. We will likely be looking at chapter three next time. I'm wondering if you, are you able to maybe do more than one chapter of reading of this for a session? So let's try to do the next four chapters. So three, four, five, six. We can read three through six. Then you guys, Cabinet's already read supposedly fourteen chapters. So you have time to catch up on your four chapters session. But yeah, two weeks from now, let's do four chapters. So we can start to put some of the ideas more together. And then I'm anticipating after that we'll be on the policy piece. Yeah?
Well, I agree that four is bigger than one. When you said more, I was thinking two.
Thank you too.
You want to do two?
These aren't that long a chapters in this book, though. They're pretty short.
The Yakima Schools Foundation, when they were doing this book study, they were doing four chapters a time. So, I mean, how about? Are you challenging them now? I'm trying to push them. How about three? Let's do three, four, and five. Oh, Don is putting back up four now.
Well, I've already read the whole book, but.
Oh, great. Then look at that, you guys. Okay, let's try to get to six. Try to get to chapter six. Okay, so we're gonna do four chapters, three, four, five, and six. Do the best.
Marcus, will, will you send us the questions ahead of time? Okay, perfect.
So just, there was a, there was, we've got a minute left. So I wanted to share with you because you mentioned easier reading. One of the ways I like to gather knowledge sometimes is reading novels that are pertinent. And there's a couple of novels I'd like to recommend that I've been reading. And one is by an author named Mateo Askapour, A S K A K A P O U R. And the book is entitled Black Buck. And the, the novel is, what it's about is a guy that's just, he's a natural salesman. And he's a, he was working at Starbucks. And he's, he moves into the high-powered financial world. And it's about navigating that world and, and all the things that happen. And it's a novel and it's a, it's, it's not a novel for kids. It's an adult novel. But it's, it really brings out a lot of the issues that we're talking about. And it's just, it's just an incredible story. And the other one is, you know, the, the books we've been reading have been written by men. And I wanted to mention a book that's written by a woman. And it's, it's called Surviving the White Gaze. And it's by Rebecca Carroll. And she is a mixed-race woman who is adopted into a white family, but has a relationship with her biological mother. And it's a true story. But it's, it's a very, very interesting read and hits on all the points. And then it's from a woman's point of view. And so I think that's there, it's just fun to read those kind of, that kind of reading takes you along faster sometimes than academic reading does, though I like both. So anyway, I just thought I'd pass that on for those of you that want extra credit.
Just send us those titles and authors, please.
Yeah, I will.
So Marcus, are we done?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody for, for today. I thought, thought it was a wonderful discussion. We're going to take about nine-minute break and we will be back at four thirty. I'm calling the May tenth meeting of the Yakima School District Board of Directors to order. The first thing on our agenda is our land acknowledgement. And I'm going to ask Graciela Villanueva to read the land acknowledgement for us.
Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the fourteen Confederated tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kitata, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native.
Sorry, I lost your audio there for a bit. I think it was on my end. Next, we have our pledge of allegiance. And we have a very special guest with us today. And I'm going to ask Ms. Danielle to introduce our very special guest and anyone, any other staff members who happen to be with us.
Thank you. So Danielle Nguyen, Principal of Early Learning. And today we have Ms. Sierra Robertson joining us from Adams Elementary Preschool with her teacher Courtney Manns, as well as our Assistant Principal of Early Learning Julie McDougal.
Mrs. Anderson, could you put the flag up on the screen? And then Sierra, feel free to start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Woo, good job.
Sierra, that was amazing. I think you're probably the youngest person that we have had do our pledge for us. And you did a great job. Now you're at Adams, correct, in the early learning?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to ask the rest of the board members to say hello to you. And they may have a question, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Graciela is having connection issues. So Mr. Walker.
Hi, Sierra. Thank you for joining us today. I hear, I heard you talking a little bit about snakes. Do you have other pets in your house or other animals?
I have, I have. I have two rats.
Two rats? Oh, okay. I had rats once. Yeah, they live in a cage. Yeah, that's probably a good place for them. Uh huh. Yeah. You better keep those rats separate from that snake, huh?
Yeah. They're a jenga.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's nice to meet you. Thanks for joining us today.
Kevin Davis?
Hi, Sierra. You did an awesome job. Very proud of you. And I used to have a bull constrictor when I was in my teens. And I know a lot about snakes and I used to have other animals as well. Uh what do you want to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
All right. You're gonna come back and teach in the Yakima School District?
Yeah.
All right. Looking forward to it. Keep up the great work, young lady. Proud of you.
Okay, Sierra. Ms. Villanueva is having connection problems and she hasn't been able to log back in yet. So uh we're gonna um move on with our agenda. You are welcome to stay if you want to. Um but I understand that there may be like dinner or something waiting for you that may be calling your name. So thank you so much for being here and thank you to your teacher and to Ms. Danielle and um your mom for being there and and I could hear her in the background. Um, thank you so much for being here with us today. You it has been a real treat to have you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready to go or you want to stay?
I'm I'm ready to go.
Okay. Say bye.
Bye.
Bye bye. What a sweetheart. If we were if we were all that precocious at for in pre kinder, right? I'm assuming she's going to Adams next year? Maybe? We'll see. Keep that keep her name in mind, though. We will be seeing lots more of her, I think. Okay, moving on with our agenda, the next item is um superintendent's update. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Director Rice. Not only that's a tough act to follow. Uh not only is Sierra precocious and adorable, but she's very intelligent. When given the opportunity to leave, she quickly said, I'm out of here. So it's wonderful to see she has she's a trifecta, triple threat. The superintendent report tonight, just a couple of items to share briefly with the board. First and foremost, graduation planning is proceeding at a at a very brisk and exciting rate. Uh so we're excited for the opportunity to acknowledge our graduates in person this year. Uh we do know that information coming from uh our Yakima Health District is changing almost every week. So we're very hopeful that we will have expanded opportunities to have more and more uh parents uh and uh family members uh at the event. Currently, we're looking at uh two parents per uh per graduate. Uh but I do believe that that will be expanding, including we were notified today that there may be availability for a vaccine uh side of the stadium. Uh as you know, Davis and Eisenhower both will be at Zeffel Stadium. Uh Stanton will be at the Four Square Church and our online acknowledgements will happen at the Eisenhower Auditorium. So just FYI, excited about those opportunities and the progress is being made in realizing those events, so those in person uh celebrations this year. Uh moving along, the Davis Auditorium uh will be something that's coming uh to you in the form of uh renovation uh that will be proposed to the board uh for approval here in the coming month or so. So we're excited to make an announcement ahead of time. Yes, that was Norm was at the hands up right away. Uh so we're excited about being able to um uh renovate the Davis Auditorium and uh what that means to our community after so many years. So please do expect that in the near future. Uh also, the last thing I will share tonight, I just wanted to be brief in my superintendent's report is that this last week uh an invitation uh to engage in consultation is the term uh with the Yakima Nation. So I met with the entire uh the chairman, chairwomen of the Yakima Nation uh to share with them the progress that we are making as a district in our partnership with them. Accompanying me was uh Dr. Sean McGinni. Uh it went extremely well. It was so good to hear uh the land acknowledgement. Graciela, Director Villanueva, thank you for sharing that this evening. Uh it was shared in consultation uh after we talked about all of our uh moves to honor the Treaty of eighteen fifty-five, uh the land acknowledgement, the proclamation which was approved. Uh several chair chairmen and chairwomen did stand up and speak on the relationship that the tribe feels is blossoming with the Yakima School District. Uh there were some very amazing stories, personal stories shared. One stands out in particular that I will share with you. Uh Chairwoman stood up and shared that her father and mother who are deceased uh would be would fall off their chairs to know that we are uh sharing a land acknowledgement uh at all of our meetings. She never thought that she would see the day that that would happen. And what struck what stuck with me was her account of her father uh being able to, you know, look at a page and and not see the words, but just see squiggly lines and marks. Uh but she went to school to learn uh the ABCs, uh one, two, threes, do, re, mi's. And she was basically lucky to be in a system where she was um for lack of a better term, not valued in what she brought in her language and culture uh to the school system. But she was looked at as somebody lucky to be able to uh be part of the system at that time and what it meant for now, the acknowledgement uh from the Yakima School District to the Yakima Nation, this growing partnership. And one chairman actually called for uh all of the other counties that were mentioned in our proclamation uh in our land, I'm sorry, our land acknowledgement to follow suit and follow the example that we are setting uh as a school district. And lastly, the tribal chair himself uh made a statement mentioning that he believed the that we have is something for uh not only the region, but for the nation to look at uh in the alignment between a sovereign tribe and neighboring school districts. So uh I'm thrilled to share that information with you. Uh I wish that I could arrange for that to happen in person with our tribal chairman and chairwomen. But of course, that's asking way too much, uh given their commitments and their demands. But it's my pleasure to share that with you. And and that really does conclude my report unless there are any questions about the three topics. Uh the consultation with the Yakima Tribe, a Davis Auditorium and graduation.
Any questions from board members? I don't see any. Okay. Um, thank you, Trevor. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's COVID nineteen update.
And for that, I will turn this over directly to uh Stacy Locke.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Uh good evening, Board of Directors. I'd like to start by introducing my colleague Jewel Brumley to go ahead and present her numbers. And then I will follow up with some specifics for the Yakima School District. Jewel?
All right.
Yes, we can.
All right. So our COVID update actually is looking pretty good. So down cases for Yakima County, if you see that nice line there, it is dive bombing down. So that's that's really good for us, especially for graduation. Let's be excited. And if you see in the bars, we're still a little bit of up and down. But um today we only had eight new cases. Everybody, so that's really good. Over the weekend, we were in the teens. So it's been a while since we've been under twenty. Uh the case rate for the last fourteen days, I have it one ninety-one point eight with the data. I got this um just a few minutes ago from the website for the weekend cases. So we are below two hundred. Yes, we're below two hundred for the last fourteen days. What really brought us down was the last seven days. And the last week, seventy cases, new cases for the week um from last Monday till Mother's Day till Sunday. The that's that average rate for a hundred thousand, which is really good. The zip code rate, if you look at the green bars there, the zip code are all down low where they were a week ago. Remember, zip code rate is about a week behind um because it comes up at state website. But they've all dropped significantly. Hospitalizations are down again. Uh we only have seven in the hospital as of today. So they're dropping all the time. Positivity rate were at ten point five on May third. I checked this morning. It was at ten, but it I can put in there more than just one date per every day, but um we're still hovering right around ten, which is what we've been doing. Uh school age cases, as of last week, we had a smaller amount of cases, um but we did have twenty-one new students, nine, five new staff. And the rate as of May fifth, it was at two thirty-five. But again, still a drop in our cases. If you look at the green bar again, which is really nice to see. And then our I'm happy to say that the forecast has dropped back down to where I was. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not. But this week's for the um case dropped down for low two hundred. And and my data says we should be below two hundred this year. I'm kind of back aligned with us. I didn't get that updated because I was updating it when when Stacy passed it on to me. But um because I I just got the data. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Jewel? Certainly encouraging, Jewel. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Jewel. So let's take a look at, and I believe you should have in uh Word docs here. And um I hope you can see I only have one screen, so I hope it's showing. So not yet. Is it showing now?
There it is.
Okay, thank you. So this is our update as as of today. And uh our contact tracing, as you know, has been going on feverishly since the beginning of January. And we hit a thousand total investigations uh as of last uh or as of Sunday, probably more likely Friday in those cases. So people are still really diligent, although you can see the number of investigations have dropped pretty dramatically over the last couple of weeks. And the trend continues to be down, which would uh mirror what Jewel is talking about. When we look at positive case celebration for last week is that we only had uh three total COVID positive cases within our district. Uh two students and one staff member, which is down from fourteen uh the week before. And again, as you can see graphically, uh we are we're headed down from that big thirty we had right after spring break and consistently moving downward. Asymptomatic testing, people, uh employees within the district receiving volunteer testing is is really diminished uh after uh spring break. And that may be in in line with the the numbers that we're seeing as far as vaccinating and lessening of positive COVID cases. And then in the works, we talked to you last couple of weeks about our mobile vaccine clinic information. And that uh release forms are out in both English and Spanish to all the schools, as well as our communications uh chief officer has done an excellent job in advertising and getting the work out. And additionally, we sent uh advertisement flyers to uh the Office of Emergency Management today to continue to advertise our sites. Um we did our first one on Saturday, which was at Adams before we really had an opportunity to get a lot of advertisement out. We end up having nineteen people take advantage of those vaccines. Um we kind of think some of it may be due to the the geographic nature that uh State Fair Park is is pretty close to Adams and people may be uh going over there to uh receive their vaccines. Again, we have ten school sites. Uh they will be returning, so we have a total of twenty vaccine clinics that will be offered at the schools listed here that are in the works. Um and we had our first one, like I said, last Saturday. So Davis and Ike kick off tomorrow. And uh then you can see going down Franklin Ridge View. Uh we've got Barge Lincoln L C, Martin Luther King Junior Hoover, and then Y V Tech on the horizon. So we're really excited about the the advertisement that's out there, the encouragement at uh residential community schools um to go forward and uh get vaccinated. Any questions?
Any questions for Stacy?
Oh, just one other comment. I just before we came into the meeting, I noticed an alert that we that the FDA today approved back the Pfizer vaccine for twelve to fifteen year olds. So maybe we'll want to hold some clinics in our middle schools and get our middle school kids vaccinated as well. But anyway, that's more good news on the national front.
Yes, it is. And then we can we can now begin. We were hoping that was going to happen so we could begin advertising for twelve and up for these clinics that will be at our elementary and middle schools and high schools. So absolutely. Thank you. Anything else I can answer for the board? Thank you.
All good news. All good news, Stacy.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Uh next item on the agenda is a presentation on honors convocation. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to kick this off?
I would like to. Thank you, Director Rice. It's uh every every year, we have the opportunity to work with our um administrative interns and provide opportunities uh for them to shine and to present to the board. Uh this year, we have the wonderful opportunity to work with Gabriel Stotts. And he has just done a phenomenal job in uh working not only in his building uh but engaging in projects here through central office. Uh as part of that work, uh he is overseeing the honors convocation, which uh last year, you may remember that Jill Frazier uh was overseeing the um mailing out and just making sure that we were able to acknowledge students in some way. Uh Gabriel has taken this to a new level. Of course, we're not fully back in person, uh but it's not simply uh mailing a medal or an acknowledgement uh to students, which we had to do last year, given the short timeframe. Uh so with this introduction, I would like to present to you our presenter to this for this evening on convocation and what it's going to look like for this year. Gabriel Stotts, please.
Uh good afternoon. Uh my name is Gabriel Stotts, and I'm currently the Career and College Readiness Specialist at Eisenhower. And I'm also the administrative intern. Uh I like to thank the board for the opportunity to present the work that I've done on twenty twenty-one honors convocation. Now, I'm going to kind of go through some of the work I've done today, but towards the end of the presentation, I'm going to be looking for some input into a few items um after my short presentation. So with that being said, let's go ahead and get started. So this year, uh virtual honors convocation is going to happen on May twenty-fourth, twenty uh twenty twenty-one at six P M. Now, we have elected to go with uh Google Meet for this event. Um now, due to the fact that Google Meet only holds up to two hundred and fifty participants, I'm working with uh the I T department to live stream this on the district's YouTube channel. Um we do have about a hundred and fifty participants from this year's for this year's convocation with seventy-seven being from Davis, sixty-eight from Eisenhower, four from Yakima Online, and one from Stanton Academy. Now, I've I've worked with President Rice and Kristen Fitterer on option of uh doing maybe some virtual backgrounds or for board members during this event to, you know, kind of make it formal and everything like that. And the direction I got from our I T department um that virtual backgrounds are going to require some extensions into Google. And as we've learned up here at Eisenhower this year with extensions and Google Meet during remote learning, that these these uh extensions can cause some very significant disruptions to the Google Meet. It crashed them early in the year. So I was kind of advised not to go that direction. Um but in work with Kristen Fitterer, we've kind of selected the background that I have and she has as well on her background right now. Um it's kind of, you know, it's real basic. It's not very busy, but it is something that I would like to maybe discuss towards the end of the presentation as well. Now, finally, for smooth transition, uh I T had suggested um that there be a master of ceremonies and I'm going to be taking on that role. Now, kind of a brief agenda um that we went through uh that we're going to go through for honors convocation. honors convocation this year is a welcome at 6:00 PM. And I just have a school board member in pre, uh, kind of in place right now, and this is something that I'm also going to be looking for some feedback on at the end of the presentation. Following the welcome would be a land acknowledgement, again by another school board member, followed by the pledge allegiance. I have worked with Donna Kelly over at Stanton Academy to get a junior from their, from their school named Luis Pena Hernandez, who is willing to do the pledge allegiance for us that night. And following that will be a board address, address to the students, which will also be another, hopefully another school board member. Um, following that will be an achievement address from Superintendent Green, and then we'll transition to a presentation of awards by school board President Rice, and then we'll transition to closing statement and an adjournment, again, hopefully from another school board member. Now, kind of some brief logistics, I've also been working with Kirsten Fitterer on an honors convocation script, which I can kind of show you guys after this slide, once we kind of open it up for questions, comments. I actually have that ready to go as well. Again, it's a draft, so I'm looking for some feedback on there, but you know, I was hoping it would just kind of help with a smooth transitions and make this event, you know, be more formal and really a home run for these students. I spoke with Dave Walter, our band director today at Eisenhower, and he actually gave me a few tunes that I'm going to be kind of playing leading up to the event, starting at 5:30. And it's kind of like some jazz band, and it's pretty good stuff, actually. Following that, we're going to do a presentation of awards, like I mentioned on our agenda. And the plan there is to do a PowerPoint presentation where we're going to present the student's name and hopefully a senior picture of those students if we can get them all, so they can kind of have their five, 10 seconds before we transition over to the next student. And we'll go through all 150 participants before we conclude the presentation of awards. And finally, the awards distribution to our honorees, this is a conversation we had that really can kind of go two ways. I know last year with it being COVID, the pandemic, basically these were delivered to the students, but maybe with some formality and it being a board event, we kind of had the idea that maybe board members would be willing to come into the schools on May 27th or May 25th for cohort A and May 27th for cohort B in the mornings, right at the start of second period, maybe about 10:15, 10:30, to deliver these packages to the students that would have their, their program, their certificate, and their medallion as well. But I, I know you guys are very busy, so that's really dependent on your schedule. So with that being said, that's kind of the work I've done so far on honors convocation. Um, to kind of add one bullet point to this, I am also working on a separate Google Meet room, so we can conduct this entire convocation in Spanish for a Spanish speaking population as well. So with that being said, any questions, feedback? The floor is yours.
Any questions for Gabe, and then we'll go into some of the logistics.
I think Gabe did a very great job in presenting his vision and looking forward to it. Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Anything from the other board members? Okay. All right, so we do have some volunteer opportunities for board members. We have a welcome address, the land acknowledgement, the board address, and then a closing, an adjournment address. Who would like to do what?
I can do the land acknowledgement, Martha.
I would love to do the board address to the students.
This year, because we're in virtual mode, we probably want to keep that to five minutes or less, just.
I've done sermons in three.
Okay. Norm, welcome or closing? There's a script, so you don't have to make stuff up.
Oh, I, it doesn't make any difference to me. I'll, I'll do the closing.
Okay.
I guess.
All right, and I'll get ahold of Raymond and see if he's welcome, if he's willing to do the opening, the welcome. This will be in two weeks from today, from tonight. Okay? So I'll get ahold of Raymond and ask him that. And then Gabe asked about the background. You can see the background that he's got there behind him. It sort of looks like a sunrise, sort of, pre sunrise. Is, is the board members have a feeling one way or another about that?
Sure, I like it.
So, um, Gabe, can you or Kirsten or somebody guide the board members on how to get that background?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. So let me see if I can present my screen to where you're maybe even able to see my screen with the presentation view. Are you able to see my screen with like the controls on the bottom, the mute? Kirsten saying yes. Okay, so right over here, it'll go raise your hand, turn on captions, and you are presenting. Now you'll see these little three dots right there. You go ahead and select those three dots. You can go right up here, it's about middle lane of your screen to where it says change your background. And then once you select that, it should open up your different backgrounds. And so, I mean, I can be on the beach, you know, anywhere. But again, it would be the one that's showing up on my top left, and I think that would be standard. I see Graciela changed hers already, but that would be the, the background, Ms. Brumley as well. That would be the one that we would be go, uh, going with, so it's less busy for our students.
Okay, we'll all have to practice. Graciela already has it down. Gabe, were you looking, what else were you looking for input for from the board?
I think on the, the delivery of the, the recognition awards to the students, how we were going to get those, is if we wanted maybe, you know, board members to split up on May 25th for cohort A and May 27th for cohort B. I've worked with Becky Shelton at Davis, and she spoke with Ryan McDaniel, and they said they could do that at Davis. Principal Diner up here at Eisenhower is on board as well, to maybe call those kids out of each of the cohorts, where board members might be able to deliver those recognition of awards to the students. Or the other option would be that the principals could actually track the students down and deliver those as well. It's really up to the discretion of the board on that one.
Okay, so after we talked last week, I think when we were talking last week, I thought, well, we'll have to do those consecutively, you know, first one school and then the other schools. But I think we could, there's an opportunity for us to do them concurrently, so that both schools are at the same time. And so that, you know, if, if folks have something that starts at noon or later, they're not necessarily impacted by having to make that adjustment for consecutive presentations. And I know that I expressed a concern about, you know, kids having little enough contact with instructors as it is, and then taking this time out of that little bit of instruction time that they have. But it sounds like staff at each school is, is going to be okay with that?
Correct, yeah, I spoke to all the principals. Well, Becky Shelton spoke to Ryan McDaniel over there at Davis, and, and they thought it would be, you know, pretty good to actually have the board maybe recognize them. They weren't necessarily as concerned with the loss of instructional time. They kind of wanted to be able to give these students something to really remember on their way out of graduating. I also spoke with Lois Menard at Yakima Online, Open Doors, and then Donna Kelly over at Stanton, because they only have the one student. And we've invited those students into either building of their choice, if they wanted to come to either Davis or Ike, so we weren't having to go in other buildings as well. And they said that they would relay that to their students and give them that opportunity as well.
Okay. Since there's just the one student at Stanton, that would be easy enough for one of us to go up there and, and make that presentation. You know, if that student's not, doesn't want to come to one of the bigger high schools.
Correct.
As well as online, if there's only, what you said, four.
Four, yep.
At online, you know, that would be easy enough to have just one person go and do that. So I think I'd like some board conversation about this.
I, I like the idea of, of, of doing that. Unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to make that work with my schedule.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm open to the 25th and 27th. I'm available. I'll put that on my schedule.
Norm, what do you think?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm available both those days.
I have not broached this with Raymond yet, but, and I don't know what his schedule looks like, but I know this is something that he'd enjoy doing if his schedule allows. So let's, let's plan on doing that, and maybe if we can do it concurrently, so that it doesn't eat up somebody's whole morning. I know that I have.
Excuse me, I would be comfortable either going to either Stanton or Yakima Online as well for one of those smaller in presentations. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, Norm. I know that I've got a commitment on the 25th that starts at 11 that I'd prefer not to miss. But I think maybe I can, we can work around it. So Gabe, let's plan on concurrent presentations at the two, the two big high schools. We have three, possibly four of us, depending on what Raymond's availability is, to do that. And, um, and then we'll just, we'll arm wrestle or something as to who gets to go to which school, I guess. And Norm volunteered to do both Stanton and Yakima Online if, if, unless somebody else wants to do that. So, um, you'll, what time do you think? The start is?
Yeah, probably about 10:30 at both schools. I know they admit at 10:15, so that would at least give the students, all the students the opportunity to get checked into the building and then go to class. And we would already have a plan in action to get those students out. I know Becky Shelton stated that she would have slips go out to the kids the day before, so they know that they would, you know, hang out wherever Davis decides to do this. And then we would do the same thing at Ike and have those seniors come to the commons that are going to participate on, on both days.
Okay. So you said 10:30?
Correct.
And how long do you think? Forty-five minutes?
Yeah, I would say anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes. I mean, with, you know, 68 students at Eisenhower, 77 at Davis, I would assume cut that number in half. And we could probably get through those students pretty quick, maybe a couple minutes speech, and we would have everything really ready to go with the manila envelopes, the students' names on them, to be able to distribute those out.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions from board members? Okay, do you need a other input from us, Gabe?
I don't believe so. I think that's everything that I have so far. You know, I'm still working on that script a little bit. I was just kind of looking for some feedback there, but I definitely will plug in the board members as a sign. So I have Graciela on the land acknowledgement, Don Davis Jr. on the board address, and Norm Walker on the closing.
Yeah, and I'll get with you when I, after I talk with Raymond about the welcome.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay. Trevor, do you have anything else for us on this?
Nothing further other than gratitude to Gabriel for his work on this.
Absolutely, you're cutting, you're cutting edge here, Gabe.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You already have, you already have most of us with changed backgrounds, that's a first.
You're treading, you're treading new ground for us.
It's true. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to present to everybody tonight.
Norm, do you have something to add?
No.
All right, well, thank you, Gabe. You're welcome to stay if you want, but I understand if you have other things that are pulling at you, and we won't be, we won't be offended if you sign off. So thank you so much for all of your work on this. Okay, next item on the agenda is the first reading of policy 1,000.3.3 governing style. Okay, this is a first reading for 1,000.3.3 governing style. There was a slight modification for clarification within the policy that we just, when we reviewed it, what, a month or so ago? Board members might remember that. So when we were going through the governing style, in the first paragraph, there are, I don't know, 10 or so sub bullets, and we added the word focus under sub bullet G. So now reads future rather than past or present focus. So this is the first reading. We will have this available for second reading when Barb. Is it too soon to have, is it too soon to have second reading on this minor edit for the business meeting?
That, that agenda is quite full, so I think we had moved on to the meeting after that.
Okay, we can do that.
On the Monday meeting.
We can do that, too.
Great.
All right, so, um, that's the what? June something?
Yes, it's June 7th, actually.
Okay, so this will be up for second reading on the June 7th, Monday afternoon board meeting. Okay. So, um, that was that. Next item on the agenda is the approval of legislative proposals, two of them. The first one is equity based funding formula. This is a proposal, the board members might remember that this proposal came out of a discussion that I was in with a group of Eastern Washington and Central Washington superintendents and board members. And there were comments about the, the prototypical school model and how it didn't serve too many of them very well. And someone suggested that we create a legislative proposal on an equity based funding formula for pre-K 12 education. So I spent some time doing that. I've kind of shopped it around to various school boards. And I'm have it before you today for a discussion and potential approval before Friday's deadline to get this submitted.
Martha, I read the, looked at it, and I think it hits all the points, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, you have any questions, Don?
No questions.
Okay. Norm or Graciela, do you have any questions or comments on this?
No, do we need a motion to, to approve submitting this as a proposal?
Yes.
I'll move that if, if, if that's not, or I'll just move that right now.
Second.
Okay, moved by Norm, seconded by Don to approve, submittle of the equity. approve submittal of the Equity-Based Funding Formula Legislative Proposal to the WASDA process. Is there any discussion? Okay. Barb, could you take the role, please?
Yep, Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. The other proposal that I'm submitting is to adjust the threshold, the qualification threshold for the community eligibility provision application. When we applied for it back, back in the day, shortly after this program was came in, was, came into being, the threshold was 40%. In the last administration, it was increased to 60%, and that's the number of students in your population that you're applying for who are free or reduced lunch. Moving from 40 to 60 eliminated a number of districts and a number of schools or groups of schools that had previously qualified for this. And so this proposal would, it would, it's, I think it's just a rule. I don't think that there's, I don't think it's a law. I don't think Congress got involved with it. I think it was just a rule out of the Department of Agriculture, U.S. Department of Agriculture. So that would be who we would be advocating for if, in fact, this proposal makes it through the process and becomes get, manages to get to the priority list for WASDA. Are there any questions from board members on the proposal? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the legislative proposal for CEP qualification threshold.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Graciela. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you take role, please?
Yes, Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Aye.
And Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you all. We, I'll get these onto the proper form and wait until Thursday night before submitting them because there, in the form, I can indicate whether other boards have notified me that they're going to be logging, signing on to this or not. So I'll let you know if I hear from anyone else. Thank you for that. I think, I think this will really work toward rounding out the WASDA legislative platform. Next item on the agenda is monitoring reports for 1,000.2.2 Working Environment of Staff. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a lead-in or are you just going to turn this over to Bob?
I'll have a brief lead-in. I want to thank Director Villanueva for sending some questions previously. I have sent those answers to her and to the board as well. And then I wanted to actually also inform the board, as you are aware, our Assistant Superintendent Anthony Marietta is out today. And so gratitude goes to Bob Noe for stepping in, so he will share the report on behalf of Anthony. So with that, I will pass it over to Bob.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Can everyone see that screen?
Yes.
Okay, so last time I prepared a, a report or did a presentation on one of these monitoring reports, it was very lengthy. And I'm looking at this one that the Human Resources Department put together as well, and it's very lengthy. So if it is okay with the board, what I'd like to do is summarize the areas for evidence of compliance, because that's where the, the most of the information is, is in the Evidence of Compliance section. So if it's okay with the board, I would just present that in a summary fashion rather than read verbatim.
I think that would be fine. The board has had an opportunity to review this already in reading it. So I don't know that anyone, I don't see any objections from board members.
All right, thank you. So this is 1,000.2.2 Working Environment of Staff. With respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, the superintendent will not cause or allow a working environment which is unsafe, unhealthy, undignified, unlawful, inequitable, biased or contrary professional or industry standards. Further, the superintendent will abide by all negotiated agreements. We find that there is compliance here. I interpret this requirement as general protection of the fundamental rights of employees as well as the obligation to provide a school/work environment for staff and volunteers that is safe from reasonably foreseeable physical and social emotional harm. The policy also specifically prohibits behaviors and emissions enumerated below. Compliance with this policy means that prohibited conditions are A, prevented, or B, readily corrected through appropriate rules and procedures. This policy is not a call for measures of staff satisfaction. Rather, it wants to know that undesirable conditions are systematically, proactively avoided and/or addressed. The, this is evidenced through the appropriate practices and operational procedures. So there's a list of compliance that basically outlines areas of investigation that the Human Resources Department engages in. All of the training that is provided to staff and to ensure that there is compliance with this provision. The next session additionally, without limiting, let me scroll down here. Additionally, without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this enumeration, the superintendent will not, one, operate without written personnel rules, which 1.1, clearly set forth work rules and other operational procedure for staff. 1.2, provide for effective handling of grievances. And 1.3, protect against wrongful conditions such as nepotism and grossly preferential treatment for personal reasons. And also 1.4, protect against bias in the recruiting and hiring process. We find there is compliance here. I interpret this to mean Human Resources will keep appropriate personnel policies, contracts, and procedures updated and accessible to all staff for reference in the daily operation of the school district. These working documents will, one, set forth expectations of employees, two, describe timely agreed-on processes for addressing personnel concerns or complaints, and prevent implementation of unfair employment practices. The evidence of compliance are written rules, policies, and operational procedures. So there's a list of all of those in the Evidence of Compliance section, which is pretty, pretty comprehensive, covering every area related to hiring, including the use of software management tools to engage in the hiring process. And then after the hiring process, all the processes related to smooth employment, including disciplinary processes, appeals, and so forth. And on Section 2, the superintendent will not fail to inform staff of this policy. We find that there is compliance here as well. I interpret this to mean that all employees will be specifically informed of their protections in the written policies, contracts, and rules that govern their workplace. The evidence of compliance here is all the ways in which this is communicated to the employees, and all the various means by which they have access to that, that information. Also, the orientations and trainings that are provided to the employees. Section 3, the superintendent will not allow staff to be unprepared to deal with emergency situations. We find that this, there is compliance here as well. I interpret this to mean that staff will be trained in and regularly practice emergency procedures regarding fire, earthquakes, threat of violence, and weather-related emergencies. Again, the evidence of compliance is pretty voluminous, covering every potential area of an emergent situation that could befall that school district. And that brings us to the end, and there is no need for any, or no recommended need for any change to this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions from board members? I know Graciela had some questions, but the superintendent has responded to those via email.
No additional questions for me, Martha.
Thank you. Other question, questions from other board members? No? Okay. So this will go into the Survey Monkey system, and Barb, when will these need to be back to you by?
May 21st.
Okay. So May 21, Barb will need these surveys back. And if there's nothing else here, we'll move on in the agenda. Okay. Next item is preapproval discussion of the monitoring report for 1,000.2.9 Communication and Support to the Board. This is a policy that we reviewed, I don't know, a few weeks ago. The board responded to a survey. All five board members responded, and all five agreed that the superintendent was in compliance with all elements of this policy. And there were no additional comments from board members on this policy. Is there any discussion from board members? Okay. We have two, yes? Yes? Thought I heard something. We have two policies that we're reviewing, the monitoring reports. I think my preference would be to dispose of both of those with one motion. Is there objection?
No objection.
Okay. The second policy is 1,000.2.0 Global Governance, Global Executive Constraint. Again, all five board members responded to the survey on this monitoring report. All five agreed that the superintendent was in compliance with all elements of the policy, and there were no additional comments from board members. Is there discussion on this one? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the rating and monitoring report for Policy 1,000.2.0 Global Executive Constraint and 1,000.2.9 Communication and Support to the Board.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the role, please?
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Aye.
And Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Next, we have a review of board policies. The first one being 1,000.3.0 Cost of Governance. Have a board member who'd like to walk us through this policy?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. I just had to switch back from screen to screen to see what I'm looking at, and then I have to get back to this screen and find the mute button, and so it's, I'm all
Welcome to my world.
Yeah. Okay, so I, you wanted to just read through that?
Yeah, just review, lead us through a review of this policy.
Okay. Okay, Policy 1,000.3.8 Cost of Governance. Let me enlarge it for my old eyes here. Okay. Because poor governance costs more than learning to govern well, the board will invest in its governance capacity. Accordingly, one, board skills, methods, and supports will be sufficient to assure governing with excellence. 1.1, training and retraining will be used liberally to orient new members and candidates for membership, as well as to maintain and increase existing member skills and understandings. 1.2, outside monitoring assistance will be arranged so that the board can exercise confident control over organizational performance. This includes, but is not limited to, the fiscal audit. 1.3, outreach mechanisms will be used as needed to ensure the board's ability to listen to community owner viewpoints and values of the Yakima School District related to the development of the district's ends and goals. This will include ensuring board contact information is publicly available. Part 2, costs will be prudently incurred, though not at the expense of endangering the development and maintenance of superior capability. Annually, the board will develop and approve a budget for training, monitoring, and advocacy mechanisms for the coming year. Additional member commitments or expenditures require board approval. And that's it.
Thank you, Norm. Is, are there any questions from board members on this policy?
I, I, am I still live?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I do have one. Listening to the, to the WASDA weekly webinar last week, the issue was brought up of boards under law are allowed to be remunerated, board members, up to $50 per meeting. And I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but I don't recall that we've ever, some boards, members waive that policy, some take the, take the remuneration and contribute it to scholarship funds. But I have not seen any, in my time on the board, I've seen no discussion or, or consideration, or I haven't read all the policies of the district yet. But I don't know if we have a policy or if we have taken a position on taking advantage of that particular law. So I just kind of was curious as to where we are with that, and that comes under cost of governance, so. Anybody can enlighten me on that?
We do have an operational procedure about that. I know that that, I know that it includes reimbursement to board members for childcare that they need to incur due to board activity. I don't have the number in front of me. We can look, we can look it up. We could also put this on a future agenda for discussion. I know that there will be legislative proposals coming forward from some West Side districts about, that kind of resurfaces that. I don't know, I don't recall if there is anything in that operational procedure about reimbursement to board members. I know that with past, past discussions since I've been on the board have been that board members are, have chosen not to take that remuneration. For the rationale that's most, mostly given is the rationale that's most mostly given is that those dollars that would go to remuneration for board members could also be could also be used for classroom funds for students. So would you like to add this to a future agenda item?
Not necessarily, and I'm not, I'm not certainly not necessarily, I'm not advocating that that I'm feeling a need for remuneration. But I was just curious that I just was not aware that we had had any statement about that issue or any and it's certainly not been part of the discussion since I've been on the board. So I just wondered what our stance was on that and what our position was on that, in knowing a little board board history on that.
I can look up the number for you after the meeting and and send that operational procedure number out to all of the board. We can certainly have that discussion when later on this summer, either during the retreat or when we discuss prioritization of the legislative proposals prior to General Assembly. And if any, if you want to bring it back for an agenda item, we'll need three, three board members to say yes, they they agree to have that on the agenda. Okay?
Sure.
Thank you for the question. Are there other questions on this policy? Okay. This one will also go into the Survey Monkey system, and Barb will need responses by the 21st. Okay. The second policy that we'll be dealing with today for review is 3.9 Process of Addressing Board Member Violations. Which board member would like to lead us through this process?
I can read that one, Martha.
Okay, thank you.
Process for Addressing Board Member Violations. The board and each of its members are committed to full compliance with the provisions of the board's policies. In the event of a member's violation of policy, the board will seek remedy by the following process. Number one, converse in a private setting between the offending member and the board president or other individual member. Two, discuss in a private session between the offending member and the full board as permitted by law. Three, possibly remove from any leadership or committee positions to which the offending member has been appointed or elected. Four, publicly center the offending member of the board. This process will normally be progressive, except at the discretion of the board.
Thank you, Graciela. Is there any discussion from board members on this policy?
And for me, as I recall, it's a relatively newer policy. Seems to be fine to me.
Okay.
Looks fine to me.
So this will go also into the Survey Monkey system, and Barb will need our responses back by the 21st. Next item on the agenda is preapproval of board rating reports. First one is 4.0 Global Governance Management Connection. Pulled up the wrong file, hold on. This policy was reviewed a few weeks ago. All five board members responded to the survey. And all five agreed that the, well, let me get down here. All five agreed that the superintendent and the board that the board is in compliance with all pieces of this policy, and there were no comments. Is there any discussion on this one? The next one is 3.1, 1,000.3.1 Governing Style. All five board members responded to the survey. And all five agreed that the board is in compliance with all elements of this policy. I'm just scanning real quick here to see if there are comments. I don't recall any. Okay, I don't see any comments on this one either. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the rating report for Policies 1,000.3.1 Governing Style and 1,000.4.0 Global Governance Management Connection.
So move. Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
The motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have items of board interest. This is an opportunity for board members to share information with the rest of the board. Are there any board members who wish to bring anything to the attention of other board members at this time?
I was just curious, is is anyone on the board attending the WASDA Equity Conference coming up soon?
I am.
Is that something you'd like to?
I think if we have two representatives there, I think I probably will not, and then we don't have to worry about quorum and and I will trust you to bring back you two to bring back excellent information, and we've been working hard on that anyway, so I'm not feeling that a strong need to attend then.
Okay. If I remember correctly, that's two half-days later on this month. Okay. Anything else from other members of the board? I did send to you all yesterday, maybe, a legislative proposal that came to us from Bethel School District what's the exact title of this? Universal Free School Meals. It came too late to be added to this agenda for approval, but the form that is used to submit these also has a block that you can use to indicate that it's pending approval by the board. But I want I'm bringing it to the board just for discussion and awareness at this point. Are there any comments from board members on this?
Just given the needs in our community, I think it's a great way to go. It certainly saves a lot of time on the part of our our food service staff and our other staff in processing paperwork and so on that would would their time would be better spent in direct service to students and parents, I think.
I don't think you'll have any argument from us. Any other comments from board members? Okay, this will be on the agenda for approval at the business meeting. And in all likelihood, probably on the consent agenda. And I'll let Bethel know that our approval is we are pending approval on this, that there's general agreement from our board. Okay, is there objection to that plan?
None.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else to share with us?
I do not at this time.
Do we have a need for executive session?
We do have a need for executive session.
For how long?
And it's it would be acquisition of real estate.
Okay. For for how long?
Well, I'd say 10 minutes, but let's go with 10.
Okay. If we need more, we'll come back to this this group.
I don't think we're gonna need more.
Okay, I need a motion to move into executive session for 10 minutes for the purpose of acquisition of real estate.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Graciela. Barb, could you take the role, please?
Yes, Reverend Davis.
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Villanueva?
Yes.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, do we need a break? Folks need a break before we gather in the other room?
Power through.
Bulldog is walking by. Okay, so we've received the sorry. We have the link in our email, so I'll see you all over there. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much. And we'll see you at next Tuesday. And in the meantime, I'll get with board members and do assignments for recognitions. We have a whole boatload of recognitions next week, so be prepared.
Bye.
Thank you.
See you later.